Justice for all. Please remain in stand for the second indictment.
Thank you, Mark.
Community also the military. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody here, do you hear me too? Yes, I hear you. Okay, I'm over business. I'm sorry guys for attending this kind of business call me out of town, but just like to personally take a look at.
Mr. Henderson?
Here, Mr. Pefferselli?
Here.
Mr. Galaducci?
Here.
Mr. Colosimo?
Here.
He's there. Mr. Verducci?
Here.
Mrs. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Shashowski?
Here.
Mayor Coglin?
Here.
Solicitor McDermit?
Here.
Engineer Brack?
Here.
I'm Joe Power. Chief King?
Here.
Assistant Chief Maglin?
Here.
And Director Miller. Sorry, everybody. Can I, oh, Charlie Preston.
Can I, Mr. Henderson?
Oh, thanks, Joe. You can be doing public comment, Joe. I just wanted to open up by taking moments to thank the police, fire, E M S and Public Works for their response to the floods last week. And once again, they've gone out of their way to prove that they put safety in the flood before itself. And we're grateful for what they do. Also wanted to thank the Senator Devon, Devon Robinson for showing so much care and visibility in the building. We appreciate that. Thanks also to Joe Power and Michael. We pulled the first test that we had of emergency manual response. Luckily, you guys did a great job and things go very efficient. And I'd like to thank the Andrew communities about fixing with the cleanup as well. They're not one of those saying, we greatly appreciate your assistance. I'll turn it over to you for your public comment.
Mr. Diply. Mr. Brightsir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Someone asked me what's new? And I thought, well, there was a flood on Baldwin Street. But then I realized that's not particularly new. As I was on Baldwin Street, someone said, "We have to go, go to Upper St. Clair, get them to stop." That's not new either. Wouldn't have been saying that for a long, long time. I remember eight years ago, there was a flood. There was a flood three years, three years ago. These are not new. What is new is the trash rack. And we will find out from the engineer whether or not he thought it made a difference. I don't know, I'm not an engineer. But that is new. That's thanks to some dedicated hard work. Hard work by the people that are sitting here and on Zoom. Hard work by the people that came before them. I know that Mr. William Calusi, while he was on council, pushed for that issue, for that trash rack for a long time. And he pushed hard and it took a lot of work. It's not easy. It's not at all easy. So, I thank you. And as Mr. Henderson said, and all of the people that helped to mitigate the issues of that day a few days ago, fortunately, it was not as bad as it has been. But I would encourage us all to redouble our efforts. I do not speak, I do not speak to you, I speak to myself as much. Okay? We can and we should do more. We can and we should do better. The problem can be solved, but it must be solved here. It is Bridgefield that resides at the center of this, of the flooding and the traffic issues that are McGlocklin Run. Without our leadership, our region cannot resolve the problem. And our residents will continue to suffer from those problems. And with that, I look forward to our future progress. Thank you.
Take it back, Mr. Tongbi, please.
Hey, folks, I think you all know, I know a lot of you now, within that. First of all, I'd like to say thank you at the start of that. Those of you who know me pretty well now know that I kind of have a usual approach on the start of the process. I'd like to thank everyone that was down there from the chief to the fire department and to everyone in Public Works and those of you, and I saw a lot of those faces down there individually. The weather wasn't as bad as before. I kind of take exception. It still wasn't good. Some were more at risk than others. But what went well, and you'll need being applauded for, is unless something was different, I didn't hear of a backflow preventer that failed that was initiated prior to Joe's coming up more of a glory. And I commend that because I was witness to it. It worked better than a couple of people who were in my family who are engineers were actually astounded at how well they've worked. At the nearest point of the water, which as you all know is my wife's apartment building. The wall of the end of Janeway held up. It didn't breach. And I have a little come back to that because in the next way through these sort of things improvements, the trash racks worked. The trash racks were excellent. But I think out of all of this, I know personally, we learned some things that we need to address to tighten up. We held back five feet of water. One inch of water got into our buildings. I know what that cost. I know that was engineered. I know an 18-year-old kid engineered them. With that, I've identified about five things we need to address immediately to make ours tighter. And I'm not full, mother nature's going to win this battle someday again. However, with that being said, the trash racks do have some room for improvement. Nick and I talked about it actually that night. DJ and I talked about it as well. There needs to be balusters along the park because the creek finds its way around the current balusters, especially when they're clogged. Then the breeze don't follow suit. We had a couple 30, would you say 30-some-foot pieces of a tree that would be pulled out of the creek that night. I'm just, you, I know the people who, I'm telling you, anyone who was around there to verify this, I know they were, as you all know, we have plenty of video evidence to support this.
Well, was that possibly that tree after the trash rack or no? I don't know.
There were three, there were three and they came down. And we both, I mean, Joe saw, would have told to get them out of there. I fortunately happened to have had a friend who was on site at another property of ours buy an excavator down and he yanked them. It's a good thing he did because at 1:00 in the morning, the second round came down with it came two other large trees that would enable the flood. And we would have been over Bowery Road long after everyone had talked about it. I can promise you that. So, the trash racks could be improved upon. The current ones could be raised. I don't know the politics of that. I know we all fought very hard to get that to happen. But in my opinion, they should be the height of Bowery Road, not the height of the ballpark. Because the fear is whether it goes around them or whether the water comes up high enough to get the debris over them, once it comes down, Bowery Road Bridge is done. Joe was almost done last Wednesday night. So, that is frankly a huge concern of mine. But that sort of was the positives, I think that all went pretty well. Stuff that I think we could improve upon is, you know, I've spoken to Ash at the rail yard, Dale with the Al's Club. We have some properties that you're waiting for this mysterious FEMA money to come and take. And look, you all know more than I know about it. I just know I tried to buy one. The Al's have tried to buy another. Ash just told me a little while ago, if he's on his way here, if he makes it, he was going to try to buy one of the third ones. I don't, well, we don't even know what the numbers were that we were competing against. But it wouldn't have worked for parking lots, just for your warehouse. I think Ash felt the same way. I know the Al's felt the same way. So, it's three years and 20 days later and we're still standing here. But the worst part is we have dilapidated properties that are now fire hazard, the Public Works hazard. And now that's where a couple of the breaches came into current creek wall. I'm not worried about looking to the creek for where the water's coming from at this point in our location. I'm watching Baldwin Street because that's where it came from the last time. Now, if those walls had the breach, would it have gotten over Janeway? It was lapping on rain. Most likely, I would say, probably would have come over. I don't know to what degree. But the bulk of that water all came down from breaches further up Baldwin. And it's properties that nobody's going to do with our things. You know, three years ago, I suggested we take those cough and block and run them all the way off the creek then. If they'd have been done, we wouldn't have lost property and breaching from last Wednesday. And it's my opinion that the creek would stay in its banks. For most part, I definitely think it would have stayed in its banks. It's three years later. All progress has been good. We can do other little things immediately to get this a lot safer. That being said, I also have a concern, and Ash and I spoke about this today. You know, we're starting to become a little bit of a blighted area there. I even, tax break, Jenny did the tax break, sure, the rail yard, we put a lot of money into improvements. And nobody speaks higher in this community than I do. I tell anyone who will listen, it's the greatest community I have a business in. And we have them in five. It is really a pleasure to be a part of this. Off the, and from this one thing that needs to be addressed. In light of all this, I mean, we're looking at the fact that if we wanted to do something with our properties, who the heck's going to buy it? I mean, we talked about 50-year flood, 100-year flood. We're talking about every six weeks. And I love it because I have family members that are like, they don't even know we flooded. Well, we're the first ones to flood. We're the last ones to get cleaned up. That's fine, I accept that. I think the turnout of people we had down there the other night did evidence of that. And I can't do any more to keep it out of my own property. I mean, it's a lot of people sitting there saying, "Oh, please, someone come solve my problem." I'm all willing to help with it, but just, I mean, I can't, I can't solve other people's properties problems. I'm just about getting arrested quite a bit. And I really would like to know why we don't have a contractor on retainer to clean up these problem sites in the creek when it's occurring. I had somebody down there within 45 minutes of the phone call. Albeit, I knew who called and wanted to get in there. You either need to find a way to get the right piece of equipment. Your Public Works doesn't have the right piece of equipment to do this job. You need an excavator with a club. I don't know how you're cleaning the trash racks. But the cost of the piece of equipment over the past year, three years, probably is as much as you've been paying these borough workers to frankly do a job that they're all at risk of, of an injury, a severe injury. So, I just don't understand why you don't have one or the other. I will offer up to you that, I mean, my friend did give me a bill. I pleaded with him to give me a bill. I mainly asked him to give me a bill to make a point as to the minimal cost it would be to have someone on retainer with the right equipment to show up while it's happening, not to give some excuse that, "Oh, there's too much water in the creek, we can't do it." I go with pickup truck and chain line, but three years ago. A little smarter than that, three years later, there was the right piece of equipment. It's not that much. If you can't afford to have the equipment, then why don't you have someone on retainer? Because you still need to clean the trash racks anyways. And I think you'd find if you put up a bid, someone like this guy's most reasonable. And then, sorry, I didn't write this all down, I would never remember at all. We talked about what people in the community have done, their neighbors, et cetera. If I'm wrong, this piece of property does not reside in the Borough Bridge, will stop me right here, but there is someone up on McGlocklin Run Road who I think sells firewood. It's right on the corner, up past the second bridge by where the little oasis used to be. Is that in the confines of the bridge over there or is that actually on the St. Clair side?
Yeah, it's free.
Well, I'd like to know who has the lack of respect for their neighbors to allow firewood to be beside a creek where we're trying to keep stuff out. And as Pat pointed out, everyone's all too ready to point their fingers upstream. We have someone inside these own confines. If they're not going to do it on their own, then put warnings in place that you're not allowed to do that on this property and make the fines severe enough that it gets their damn attention. There was plenty of pieces of cut firewood that came down in that creek. I'm not saying they clogged it, but they did it all matters. And had we not cut the big pieces out, they certainly aren't the type of pieces that make for easy flow. And then, the only other question that really I have for you all is, you know, at this point, Jenny and I would like to know who to direct some written correspondence to, to take action about. Because I stood up on that bridge and I don't know who was around it. I, I can't do this much longer. I would do anything for anyone down here in this community. All they have to do is ask. But I can't hold mother nature back anymore than I just did. That's about as good as we get. So, I'd just like to know who would we address these concerns so that they're codified? Because it's really kind of unfair for me. Jill and I have had some heated conversations over the past year about the new, you know, exit, any rest, any rest of the rest that you're going to put at the end of Janeway. It's designed to occur at height. We talked about this right when we came on board. It's my opinion that it should be higher, about three feet higher. I highly doubt that it's going to be high enough. Again, we were almost weren't high enough last Wednesday. And I would like formally put these things out to someone because saying no, we talked about it, that it doesn't hold much weight later on down the road.
Your comments will be in the record tonight.
Okay. If there's anything else, say, in those obvious needs.
Well, Todd, you're going to put it raging. I mean, I have to send it to Joe and then copy of council, just so you put it on practice.
Yeah. I just, it's just time, guys. You know, it's time. I try to be constructive about it and I don't want to be someone who's just bitching and moaning quite frankly with the excuse language. But it's time, but you're seeing ten properties are getting wiped out every single time.
Well, one thing, Mr. Henderson, that I can tell you that on that budget, Tom, Tommy and the months, we are really discussing whoever you look for a bigger, bigger equipment so we can clean trash racks from the road, but we can't go office on wet, black, you know, so. So, we discussed it for the budget. Matter of fact, the manager already got some prices. And the rest is all engineer work. We've got to, sooner or later, we must make a motion, not tonight, but sooner or later, we've got to make a motion to put all these things in perspective and our engineering for wider better work, piece of better. The trash, the trash rack, we know very well, all of us know that it needs improvement. Every one of our shit knows that. I, sigh, we know that. And then again, then we have to go through FEMA again, but, but ask them to. Or you just started to think the wheels go.
I think we needed to start somewhere.
Thank you.
And I think we did that. I think it's a good job. And now it's time to look back and say, all right, we had a pretty significant score. What went right, what went wrong? All right, how can we make more of those wrong items to what happened right? So, I mean, I wrote every single one of them. And as far as the trash, can you lift those? That obviously we're going to ask the engineer, but you know, number one, I would think they're in there for good. I don't, I don't know those different things. But what else could we do? Couldn't we make it wider to be able to stock more, more things and all those things? But those are the things that now, now that it's happened, all right, we need to relook at it and say, all right, how can we improve it?
I don't know whether, I mean, I did our foot and screw this eye and everything that I did and it worked. But I also see how close we came to failing. You and I were actually standing there, I think I told you, I think we could pull back two, two more inches of water. It was by grace of God. And the fact that trash racks do give rise to a potential other bigger problem should they fail. Now, you guys fought everyone into the sun just to get them to exist. So, that's a great start. And again, I want to applaud the things that were positive, but I'd be remiss if I didn't point out the things that need addressed and frankly, the things that were just flat out. Why aren't we doing this? And I think there needs to be a sense of urgency and a ticker put on it. Because, look, I'm raised to it. If I leave it to my kid, he'll engineer pieces for a race car and it'll never see the racetrack. We don't have the luxury of this. That's, that's a fancy. This isn't a fancy. This could have been bad. And when those walls breached, the problems come in two feet sooner right now. You know, at least can we get concrete blocks along those breaches to keep this stuff on the finger of the banks? It's a, it's a Band-Aid. But I'll take a Band-Aid right now until someone gets around with the three oh six for a suture. That's all. I mean, I'm always there to try to help with the solution because I don't believe in bringing a problem without trying to think of a way to solve it. I guess that's.
Just a great opportunity. Thank you, Tom.
You know, wait. That's actually, yeah.
And the ballpark was a, was a significant amount of money to do that project. For a lot of that was doing dirt, low in the field. I mean, the, the actual folders that go in the creek, I mean, are they expensive?
Yeah, I mean, it was not a cheap project.
Right.
One of the issues you have, not to dive too deep into the weeds, but the reason it took so long to get on is.
Permits.
Permits and impacts, the hydraulics of the actual flow of water. It slows it down. So, the height of them, there's magic there because if you make them two foot higher, when the debris gets caught up and it backs off the stream, it floods the properties adjacent. Right now, it gets within six inches and we couldn't change that. So, there's a hydraulic wall of everything coming downstream. The storm event that you experienced, bird itself did not experience a lot of rain on the, on the magnitude scale. I think as everybody realizes, it all happened upstream. It was on the scale of 200-year event. The year thing, everybody all of a sudden is in on that. Well, this has happened five times in 200 years. That's just an engineered terminology. It could be equivalent to how many inches of rain came down in one hour. And it was three inches an hour is what was put out. It's not official yet, but something official comes out probably in the next month that will document that, what happened upstream of Bridgeville. But if you have that big bowl of water coming down and the trash rack was higher or wider, what happens upstream is it pushes it out or it may push it over the banks of the park and wipe out the park again. Because it, there's too much water that can't get past. Now, we did talk to Joe today. I'm going to take a look at the models built for everything that happens to the borough. We do have a draft report. Let's get everybody a magnet to the scale, something that's going to go to planning commission. But I think we talked a year ago, year and a half ago. My gut feeling was this is a $20 million problem. This is a $20 million problem. Can it be addressed? Yes. Does the wall probably need to be higher as it comes through and the edge is raised? Yes. The solution is going to be recommended in the end is not jersey barriers, not jumbo block, but it's got to be a levy wall that's going to be soldier bean wagon, concrete that doesn't go over overtime, doesn't get washed out. It's going to be a permanent structure, kind of like this trash rack. This trash rack had tremendous amount of weight behind it with this wall of water. It built up with debris, you know, six, eight, 10 foot high, all pushing behind it. They say that they're filled with concrete, they're embedded. Now, I'm not saying if we get the 500-year event and it comes down and it starts brooding, it may rip them out because there's just too much weight there. And that's why D P doesn't like them. Engineers don't like them for the most part because it could create a problem. Now, they're, it's structural and embedded, it's mass concrete. But if you make them wider, now that design changes. Now, there's more weight because now instead of the width that we have, it's twice that width and then it's twice the weight. It will force the water towards the park, but the magic is in this, it has to bypass at some point. When that rain event comes, it has to get around and back into the stream. And right now, you're kicking it out. I want to look at the debris field. It matches pretty close to what the D P's going to want. It's, it's spread out, it's over about 100 feet. It's at the high end, there was sticks and debris and things like that. It washed down the bottom of the trash rack. And the rest of this stuff that creates a problem and flood is, you know, those rocks that come down. They dropped those where the design says, backed it up so the water come down and hit and kicked into the park and then it spread it out everywhere. And it's spread out about 16 inches thick roughly at the top end and then it dissipated down into the park. So, we want to be very methodical on it. So, I'm not saying no look at it, definitely do. Let's look and see what one, one more does, see what it does in the model. And then two, because there's a distance between the two. You notice they're very systematic on how, how they're put in place and just see what it does. This is the design that everybody talked about for years. And when we finally did get the permit, we made two tweaks to it to get it. And that was because, I think if I remember right, the original design was straight. The D P refused to permit that. So, these are on angles so that as the water builds up, it does let water over the top of it. So, so those things in the design can be looked at. The Janeway, we do match the height that's there today. In the end of the day, the final fix, those would get raised up. And whatever height the levy wall is on both sides, that's what we can establish. The other thing that has to happen in town, depending on timing and what design the council's good with, I mean, it's going to take a number of years to build a project of this size. But there's two areas that are like bathtubs. Baldwin Street needs screw pumps. We have them in a few other communities. They were put in in the seventies after Hurricane Agnes. They moved a tremendous amount of water quickly. So, on Baldwin Street, you have to have redundancy in case you lose power. They have to have emergency generator that pumps the water from the catch basin system and from what's falling in that area up over the wall that's going to build. So, step one on the lowest part of town is get the wall built. And then you have screw pumps below this building on the bottom side of town. Pump up over the wall and that keeps water in the stream. The second part of town is Baldwin Street, do the same thing repeatedly. There is some structures that need changed. You know, the county bridge, there's pier in the middle, it's problematic. If you run the hydraulics, it says it's okay, but experience tells everybody here, just when we just heard testimony, it's a problem. Stuff builds up and you gotta yank it out of there. So, functionally, it's an issue. That needs to be addressed. The borough's going to ask again that the county replace that bridge so that it can pass the flood. Upstream, the other bridge is the same one, the one on Baldwin Street. It needs to go, it needs to be higher. It catches debris, when it does, it kicks the water out and it goes in a very irregular pattern and then you can't control it. You can't keep it within the stream. So, if you spend the money on the walls, you got to spend the money on the bridge and then fix it. So, that'll be within the study and it is in the study. And then as you get upstream, you eventually get to where water can stay within the stream because downstream, it's getting funnel through and it gets to the back channel. The back channel will always need, needs to be maintained. We just, we just talked. When it gets gravel bar there, it got to go away. We got to get rid of it because if the gravel bar exists, backs water up into the stream channel, the velocity decreases and then it just gets worse upstream and then the model doesn't work. So, over time, you do always got to have a maintenance component, whatever, whatever you build with each piece. And part of that is equipment or contracts and just making sure you have those in place. So, it is baby steps, steps. It is very expensive. I do think it's a pretty good timing to have a study completed of. It doesn't help with the current flooding situation, but I think it's going to be a fairly good grant opportunity year to start this process, to start a phase project. I kind of look at this as one of those projects where if you can get phase one funded, the likelihood of getting phase two and then phase three and then phase four funded goes up dramatically because you get the first piece funded. You weren't very successful in the last two years of getting all these first projects funded and the last piece of that, the Janeway street, is going to get constructed here next, next week. To get that piece done, and that was really just a piece for access so that it's immediate access when the flood goes away to get things. so that it's immediate access when the flood goes away to get things cleaned up. You don't have that today. You gotta move stuff and it's difficult. So, so that should address that. We kind of have the same plan for Maple Street. That also has a problem that water come back up. You have the ramp there. That same system needs to put in there eventually, but there's no reason to do that until after the downstream stuff is accomplished. So, but we have worked last year to everybody's problems on paper. Went through the model, went through a bunch of different versions, a bunch of different options. We looked at the tunnel from all the way through, what we're talking for. Those things work, but not as good as actually just permitting walls and widening the streams. It does have property takes along the way. There's a couple of different versions within that study. It shows Baldwin Street being narrowed a little bit, showing Baldwin Street not being connected. But you'll have some options to look at as council will say which one makes the most sense for the borough. So, but I think what everybody observed is currently what the model will show us. And that's what, I had John who worked on the model who works with Joe closely. He lives out in this area. He'd come out the next morning. He looked at how all the water flowed based on the data we had on the storm event. It happened the way if we put it in the model. The water levels and stuff were pretty close to what we would expect. The water didn't basically back up on the Baldwin as was described and not a through event like if this rain came here. It was more of a backup event. And that's what the news showed. They showed the water was stagnant. It was coming up. It was raising. There was a running.
I know. The water did not back up in the Baldwin. The water came from a breach of three places along the creek. And the one I can show you the video to prove it. The water did not come from the storm drain. It did not come up from underneath. I have some pumps in. They never even turned on because
But it did come from upper Baldwin all the way down like the last event.
So. Correct. I lived it.
I understand. But it was just sitting.
I had the jet jack guys the next day tell me they were looking for a clog in the drains that they couldn't find. There wasn't a clog in the drains. The water didn't come from the drains.
But after a breach, it just sat. Water didn't
There's no rat foot preventer at the bottom of Jane Way because it wasn't put in properly. So, water But the back foot preventers in our basements worked and actually took the water away even when there was five feet of water outside. That's why I was amazed that they didn't even have to have my some pumps turn on.
Yes, now, one thing on that too. The back foot preventers yourself, though, we have to make sure everybody knows. They need check after events like this because the next event, they may not work any clean. So, there is a maintenance component to those also because if they're not maintained, if it happens rain after rain after rain, then you do have issues there.
With all due respect, I don't know how many years you're talking about, but I'm sure it's not in my lifetime. My property coughing blocks worked and they would get you somewhere and tell the grandiose plan to be done for a maintenance of money.
I understand what you're saying, but I've also seen those get removed, float downstream and go through somebody's house.
I've seen downed concrete blocks.
Yes. I've seen cement trucks float downstream and flood. That creates a huge issue. So, no disrespect to what you're saying. You're not going to see us engineer that and put that on the street. It'd be the solution that somebody uses with the amount of water that comes down the block and run, especially in a 200-year event. So, we will agree to disagree that the borough would have that be their solution. It's not going to come out of us as an engineering firm. So, if you want to put that on your property, by all means do. That's not something that we're going to recommend to the borough.
Again, I will look at the creek number five and I'm looking at the street.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate you, Ken. Where are the regular waiting committees?
Under new business item one, a motion to approve the June 14th, 2021 by your meeting minutes as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Mr. Reducci and Ray Jane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Question carries. I do too. A motion approved in July 2021 papers.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. A motion approved to July 16th, 23rd, 30th, and August 6th, 2021 papers.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, a motion to adopt ordinance number 1022. An ordinance of the Borough of Bridgeville amending its code of ordinances, chapter 15, motor vehicles and traffic, part four, general parking regulations, subsection 15 dash 402, parking prohibited at all times in certain locations, and part 11 of fire lanes, subsection 15 dash 1101 designated fire lanes and total waste zones to establish a fire lane and prohibited parking area in a designated location on McMillan Street.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number five, a motion to authorize the execution of a contract binding between the Borough of Bridgeville and Traffic Planning Design Incorporated for professional services including the preparation of an active transportation plan in accordance with the RFP issued in the paper and the work plan submitted by this firm.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For six, this bid opening was on Friday after the gentleman put out. There was a number of bids received. The lowest bid received is from G. Celandro Excavating LLC. And the amount of that bid was $151,795. Says six, a motion to award contract to G. Celandro Excavating LLC in the amount of $151,795 for the short-term park stream restoration project.
I'll move.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
I do have a question on the motion. Is that going to help anything with any type of flooding or is that just the restoration?
No, this is the section of roadway and stream bank that's been eroded since Hurricane Ivan.
Right, right, but is there anything that we can do to help any flooding within that project?
No, it's the projects sort of store what was eroded and put the road back. And then this also completes grading for the new playground. It will go adjacent shelter.
If these guys have worked for us before, is this somebody new in here?
They do a fair amount of this type of work in the area. They have no contracts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, a motion to authorize the execution of change order number six for the McLaughlin Run Park improvement projects that resulted in a decrease of $16,336.86 to reflect fuel measured final in place quantities.
I need a motion. So moved.
Second.
Any questions in the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Question.
Motion carries. Number eight, a motion to authorize the disbursement of $25,181.51 from the Capital Project Funds Credit Site Development and Painting Company for partial payment number five of the McLaughlin Run Park improvement projects.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, a motion to authorize the disbursement of $17,987.65 from the Capital Project Funds and Jet Jack Incorporated for partial payment number two of the Bowery Hill Road Storm Water Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, a motion to authorize the disbursement of $9,907.8 from the Sewer Fund to Jet Jack Incorporated for partial payment number three of the Backwater Valve Contract Phase Three project.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11, a motion to authorize the disbursement of $56,679.30 from the Capital Project Fund at SNN Industry LLC for invoice number 1797 of the Bridgeville municipal building roof replacement project.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, a motion to concur with and direct the Charlotte Council of Governments to authorize payment of $30,487.87 to Independent Enterprises Incorporated for partial payment number one of the 88 preemptive sidewalk improvement projects.
Seven.
Seven.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, a motion to accept and pay any commission due for the June 2021 real estate tax collector report.
Aye. I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, a motion to acknowledge receipt of the May 2021 treasurer's report.
I'll move. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, a motion to accept the June 2021 police report.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
As a case of meeting reports, administration, Virginia?
I have nothing this one. I'm going to leave that for finance.
Thank you. Any question for the chamber members? Finance, Mr. Reducci?
We had been going through a process, well, excuse me, not we, Joe. Been going through a process on the, all the documentation that needs to be submitted for the American Recovery Act fund and the funds that are submitted for Bridgeville. We were able to receive half of those and to be honest with you, I couldn't believe it would just hold me, but we already have those funds. So, kudos to him on getting things moving because I, to my understanding, there are some municipalities that are still waiting. So, thank you, Joe, for your diligence on the paperwork. I hate to say it, but the school and borough taxes are going to be mailed out this week. You might actually have already received your bills. Yes.
Got it.
You're gone?
Yep.
The GEDF grants for the Bowery Hill Storm Sewer Project and the McLaughlin Run Flodrick contract suspensions were extended through the end of the year to close out the project. So, but the grants are expiring June 30th. So, we were looking to do that. Joe, did we get that extension?
Yes.
And looking at our budget to actual regards to halfway through, we're doing pretty good. Obviously, the general fund is lower, but it's expected because the tax bill just went up. So, we're doing well as far as the expenditures. We do have a couple of things down, which for obvious reasons, the mercantile and the business privilege taxes are down due to the pandemic. But the sewer fund and the trash fund are right where we're expecting them to be. So, as far as the financials, we're right where we need to be after six months of the calendar year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Reducci. Anything for our finance chairman? Part of recreation. Joe, you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm here. Real quick, the Blackwood West Park, all of it will be finished. We bring that first building up on June 19th. And the park is under runs as far as I've ever heard. The ones that any damage from the park itself. We're going to live with it as far as I'm aware. As far as the characters, park, bid open, we're doing the work on sprees, the banks out of there, plus the excavation with the space of new pavements. Paying if it's been done in this, this spring, I think we're trying to tie that in with the paving contract. Look, we might be next fall, chartering partnership. I'm in hopes of that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Joe. I'm glad to see you over here and wish you a speedy recovery. So, we can have a couple of drinks. I see you. Thank you. Anything for parts? Joe's been in hospital, so it was nice for him to appear in our meeting. Thank you, Joe. Okay, anything else for parts? Public records, me actually, some of the things have been addressed already. Some like the roof and the parts and so forth. And all of you have got the report. And I don't have anything else. I'd like to thank you all the volunteer for the help on the flood and Tom will make a lot of good. He always does. He makes a lot of good suggestions. And some of those, it's ASAP for us council to get together with the manager and council and the engineer. And I hope that we could do that soon. At least let's start, as Mr. Reducci said, start something. Thank you. Public safety, government reports. Honored mayor, Mrs. Goplin.
I received a call from Alan Pettit on Carroll Avenue. Said he was very impressed and grateful for the flood response. And on June, July 1st, I presented a proclamation to the Bella Bean for their 20 years in business. They were very happy, fortunately for me. Councilman Sheselsky happened to be there and he participated and took pictures of my presentation to deadness setting, who was surprised and very grateful for our acknowledging their presence in Bridgeville. From the Bridgeville Community Association, with heartfelt thanks, the Bridgeville Fourth of July Decorating Contest was small, but an overall success. We appreciate your commitment to add some fun into our Bridgeville neighborhoods. Congratulations to the winners of the 2021 contest. First prize, John Snyder, 681 Elk Street. Second, the Morocco Family, 229 Hall Street. Third, Denise Zarnoski, 2235 Lindsay Avenue. If you have any recommendations or comments for future Fourth of July contests, please let us know. They would be greatly appreciated. Again, thank you for adding to the community and let us make next year bigger and better. Sincere, Fort Mayor Pat DeBaisio and Bridgeville Community Association. Thank you.
Thank you for the mayor. Thank you, Mayor Mayor. Please, chief chair.
Thank you, vice president. I provide the rate report. If there's any questions, I'm sure I can provide answers to it. And other than that, I don't have anything.
Thank you for the chief, please. Thank you. Now, we have to list Mr. Legal person over here.
Oh, thank you. I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, sir. Anything for us to listen? Our engineer, Kevin?
We can send in our report dated July 8th. The only update I have is the department will be scheduled for this week to be redairs. That will be the last item for the paper to be completed and paid for this year as well. There's a lot of people, so the rest of us, make sure. It was a little rough. Hopefully that helps.
I hope we can revisit you real fast on some of the things we discussed tonight. I would love to try. I started to hope that we assume. Thank you. Okay, fire chief?
Yeah, last one to lead 23 calls. Also, me and the fire department, I'd like to thank all the, everybody else for helping out with the flood, all the other fire departments that have called in, helping pump out detail, helping with the work closures and the cleanup procedure. Also, as a public, when you're out there in the floods, just to keep in mind of everything around you and just some of the crawl areas, like I said, the trash rack, they're like people like to gather, just be very cautious, beware, try to stay away from it because God forbid something does happen, but it'll be another secondary issue. So, just try to stay away. So just try to stay away from the areas and be courteous to everybody out there because we're trying to do the best we can to get it out and save so we can everybody evacuated process cleaned out as soon as we can. And that's all I have.
Anything for the Fire Chief? Thank you. Southridge GMS? Mr. Miller? No, no, you went back. Come here. A library and a representative from the library? Mrs. Copeland, you have anything from the library? You usually some for the historical society every day. Next. Okay. Anything, anybody for parking authority? When are we going to put some pressure on parking authority too? Even though they send us some papers to every representative over here or every quarter, two, three times a year, they have a meeting with them. I've been saying this for years and years and years. They never happen. I mean, it's very important that we meet with them a couple of times a year, just in a formal way, public. And so the question to be answered and the things happen every day with their raising the money and this and that, that we find out mostly from the rest and you don't find out from them. I think it's very unproper for them. But anyway, let's try. Let's try to get a meeting with them. We're council. Any party, open, formal meeting. And so, what do you say? Bridgeville Running Commission? Mayor?
Well, we have my report from the June meeting. And outside of the fact that we're coming out, we're going to have another meeting July 26th, which everybody is welcome to attend because I feel it'll be interesting.
Mr. Dobler, you have anything to add to it? What she said. Thanks. Are you doing a Zoom meeting or are you?
No, I'm.
Thank you, sir.
Same format as council.
Good.
Do you have the option?
Bar Ominigent?
Beyond my report, just a reminder that the household hazardous recycling event for computers, TVs, paint and whatnot is on August 7th at the fire station. We've been heard and we need to take attention.
Okay, anything for Bar Ominigent?
I have one thing, Joe. Joe, kudos to you in regards to giving us such a detailed report of what happened. These are just things written down that we can work back and say, all right, what, again, what can we do differently? So thank you very much for putting this together.
Mr. Chairman, are you still there? Anything from you, sir?
No, no, again, I apologize for having to spend this minute. Thank you. Thank you all who've come. Like your heartfelt kindness about what you're willing to do down there. Every one of us, here, who we can help. We try this, but we're going to be there. We appreciate your eye on that situation from all time and sharing the information. This is the best we can do for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. New business, anybody?
I do have a few questions. I didn't really get the opportunity to ask questions to our engineer earlier. I know we had a lot happen on July 7th. A lot of opportunities for things we could fix, things that we can recognize that went well. Several members of the community have brought things to my attention and several of them are here that brought it to our attention today. So I do thank you guys for coming in. There are a lot of concerns that we can expedite with simple, as some people would say, mandates. We appreciate those opportunities to see what those could be as far as not just looking for those five-year, 10-year, 20-year programs, $20 million programs. We need things done now. We need the opportunities to find those. Breaching on Baldwin Street is unacceptable. Breaching this unsealed walls on Maple Street, to me, is unacceptable. Not finishing the wall on Maple Street, unacceptable. I know those are figured out. We do your job properly.